Okay, if everybody please rise. I'm gonna go ahead and start with the Council of Rights will leave as an implication. Council of Lords will do the pleading.
Excellent, let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight for another opportunity to take care of the business of the city. God, tonight, we thank you particularly for those who are willing to give up on their time to serve other people as we celebrate the Chairman this evening. I would pray that you would bless these proceedings and give us wisdom and grace. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We appreciate everybody and those on social media with us, we appreciate you too for being here. Tonight, we are honored to have longtime friends of Centerville, Chairman Tommy Stonaker and his wife Sandy Goodnake this evening, who are here with us. Thank you, Chairman, for being with us. Stonaker family has been an integral part of Centerville for a very long time. His uncle, Centerville Councilman Paul Stonaker, was one of the leaders who undertook the effort to have the city charged in nineteen fifty-eight. I've got a picture of him back there, too. Like to give everyone that. Their history in Centerville actually goes much further than that. Chairman Stonaker began work with Houston County in nineteen seventy-two. That's fifty years ago. That was the year I first arrived at Robbins Airport Base as a second representative. And I remember that when I first arrived here. I had three tours after that. And the point is my family came to love the feel of Houston County. When I retired, we decided, as many others have, make our home here. And we were so happy we did. Chairman Stonaker was a leader who created the environment we now proudly call home. We have seen Chairman guide us in everything around us, from new streets, to new buildings, to cooperation between the cities and county, and to a stronger partnership between the county and Robbins Airport Base. Now, this is just to name a few, but there's been a lot of names, ladies, there's a lot of things he's had his finger in, particularly Robbins Airport Base, it's a wonderful job out there with him. Stonaker family have always remained a part of the history of Centerville. We thank you for that, sir, you and your family. They really do, they are part of our beginning, part of our continuation. If you come up, please, I'm gonna ask the Council to read them, please.
It is a pleasure to read this proclamation today. Proclamation. Whereas Chairman Tommy Stonaker has worked in Houston County for fifty years, thirty-eight years as an employee of the county, and twelve years as a commissioner, and whereas has long been recognized by the citizens of Houston County for the vital role that he has played in leadership and his deep personal commitment. And whereas because Chairman Stonaker's strong leadership, integrity, and local government management and fiscal skills, he has positioned Houston County for continued growth. And whereas dedicated to his community, Chairman Stonaker sits on several boards, including the Houston County Hospital Board of Directors, the Middle Georgia Regional Development Council, the Board of Health, the Perry and Houston County Airport Authority, and more. And whereas Chairman Tommy Stonaker has been a tremendous help to the city of Centerville through his cooperation, help, and assistance during his tenure. And whereas Chairman Stonaker's strong organizational and leadership skills and his keen sense of vision will be missed by the mayor and council of the city of Centerville. And now therefore being resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Centerville now proclaim December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as Chairman Tommy Stonaker Day in the city of Centerville. To recognize and thank Tommy Stonaker for his many years of service to the citizens of Centerville and Houston County, and to wish him well during his much deserved retirement after his fifty years of combined service with Houston County and the Houston County Board of Commissioners. So, people claim that today is Tommy Stonaker Day in the city of Centerville.
Okay, now, if anybody else can come up now. We have a presentation for you two right here. This presentation here says, "Thank you for your service and dedication to the city of Centerville, Chairman Tommy Stonaker." Mayor and council, we're all proud of doing this, we're all part of it, as he's been so much a part of us.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I think you can have the picture, too? You left. I know Sandy couldn't make it, but he has her. I know you want to say a few words. Please, I'm trying to sit down. First of all, Mayor, Council, as I said several times before, I'm not sure that I really deserve credit and appreciation that I'm getting because I have not done anything by myself. I've always had other people that have helped me, and I've always stood on other people's shoulders. I've always seen this county as one. I've never seen it segregated, there's three cities in the county, I see us all, place to live regardless of what boundaries, political boundaries, and living. The city of Centerville, I can remember, has come a long way. Somebody here remembers that as well. I can remember where the city hall is at, it used to be a ballpark. And I think Becky Tidings may have played in it. And Mike, and many others, and Mayor, you mentioned Michael. I remember his service station right down here in the Houston Mattress Company, and I spent many days in Centerville, and walking to the intersection right up here, there's a store there. But I'm not gonna go any deeper in the history because I really am getting until my age. But Centerville's come a long way, you've got a long way to go, you've got a lot to be proud of. Y'all be proud of yourselves, first of all. Y'all done a very good job leading Centerville in various elected positions. You're very active, not only in Centerville, but the community as a whole. And I think all of y'all has a vision, and a vision is for the whole, and it's not just your district or your city, it's for the entire betterment of the community that we live in. And I think that is one success that we've had. I think it's a great thing that I have head for Centerville. I think there's a lot of projects that can be done jointly, and I am thoroughly convinced that the leadership is following me. With Chairman Dan Pugh coming on board and the other commissioners that are just coming in there, I think they won't miss a beat, continue on the way it has been, and I'm just honored to have had the pleasure of running, John. But keep in mind, if good Lord's willing, I'm not going anywhere. So, I'm still gonna be here. So, I'll be around, and I'll be glad to assist you any way I can, and if you need some advice sometime, call me, it's free.
And worth what you pay for it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Advice always a good, really help the city. Always a one. Had some good things that have happened, I know, with the county and the city over the last few years in particular, as far as cooperation and helping out. Why don't you rise up first? Y'all got some good employees, too. I mean, I want to tell you that, and I don't need to tell you that, you know you've got some good employees, but you really do, they know how to get things run, they know how to work together, and some of them in this room tonight, and some of them not in this room tonight, but y'all are very, very blessed to have that level of employees that you do. And I want to say again, thank you. I've said enough, and I'm gonna get out of your way. And I look forward to between man and thirty-first, I will tell you, those of you that have my cell phone number, and I think most of you do, I'm gonna keep that number. I encourage you to call me when you've got a problem, because then I can tell you who to call and give you the correct telephone number to deal with that problem. Thank you, Lord. I will tell you, historically, I thought it was a great day today. The camaraderie that we had, or the coming together that we had today in this county to agree to do one thing united together is gonna help with crime in this county as for asylum, and I think even resisting it from occurring. I know Mayor Hardy and the other two mayors were, and myself sat down one day and talked about it, and we said, all three of us said, in basically unison, and I said this today, unless it's one system, it's not gonna work, that's the only way we're gonna participate in it, is gonna be one system. And that's the way it's turned out. The law enforcement coming together is a demonstration of this county as a whole, all the citizens and all, do not tolerate crime, and we want it to stop, and do everything we can to stop it. That being said, I'm good, if I won't say anything besides that.
Well, I'll tell you, it was a great opportunity for us to be, to be part of the activity, of the announcement, and I certainly believe that the safety and security of our citizens in all of Houston County is important, and you saw that today with the unification of all the departments as well as the cities. And again, that did not go without your leadership and the leadership of the county as well, standing there and helping us all work, you know, we constantly work together.
Councilman Wright, I saw you in the back there today when you came in, and I started, put you on the spot, Kate, come on up.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and I made it there to be there to support our chief and everything they were doing, but I'll echo something that was said today, I believe by Mayor Walker, that has been said about you many times, I don't know if you know or not, but we frequently go to trainings with the Georgia Municipal Association, even in meetings with the regional commission, people from other counties, and they will sometimes, oftentimes complain about the difficulty that they have fighting it out with their county, and how do you work when your county is antagonistic towards it, and all those things, and we honestly, but they will, the force to be able to say that is not an issue. In fact, the story that we tell that just amazes people is when we talk about how much the county partners with us who are building the park, and how much dirt y'all moved out here for us, and how much you used your guys to move that dirt out here just to see people from other cities just kind of go slack-jawed when they hear about the partnership that we have and the way that we work together, and that all comes from your leadership. And I think you've left a tremendous legacy, and I feel, speak for a lot of us, I think it's our job to continue to take that, what you've built, and to continue to take it further. So, thank you very much.
Just keep it going, keep it going.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. I've been here twenty years now, and Tommy and I, during that time, we've had a great working relationship and friendship, and meantime, when he'd be on the road somewhere, he'd call me, and the name came up on my phone and said, "Hey, I'm thinking about this," and tell me what he was thinking, such as that, so that's happened over the years. I've met with him in his office sometimes, and most recently, on August the eighth, I'm in the hospital with my daughter who's having a baby, and my phone rings, and it says Tommy Stonaker. And I said, "I gotta take this call." She said, "Mom, I'm having a baby." I said, "But you don't understand, it's Chairman Stonaker." So, I answered the phone, and he told me what he had on his mind, and I told him what I thought about it, we talked a minute more, and I said, "You know, I really gotta hang up this kid while you're in here." And we had a baby girl in about twenty minutes. Anyway, but, you know, of course, I feel like we'll stay in communication, I'm appreciative what I've learned from you and the friendship we've had, and just have appreciated the work you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all. God bless you too, each and every one of you. Keep up the good work. Okay, we have nobody on the agenda for public discussion, so we'll go to the adopted amendments. We have two sets of amendments here, November first, twenty twenty-two, resident council meeting, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, council work session. Entertainer motion to adopt both sets of amendments as written, or secondly, okay? Second. Motion and second. Any discussion by the end of amendments?
Yes, sir.
You know, discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Ready, pass. We have nothing tonight for old business, and new business. I love this one. Favorite friends out here. Resolution adopted of Middle Georgia Robbins Air Force Base Sustainability Plan.
I'm not Greg Boyke. So, it all worked out so that we needed to send Greg to Peach County for them to consider the same issue, and their meeting was at five o'clock, nowhere, no way to get there and then here safely, so we just discussed with me. I'm joined tonight also by Bob Herman from the Twenty-First Century Partnership, if you haven't had a chance to meet him yet, he's been on the job two months.
Two months.
And so, we are here tonight to talk to you about the Middle Georgia Robbins Air Force Base Sustainability Plan. This is our first sustainability plan. Historically, we've had a joint land use study, or J-LOSE, the last J-LOSE that we had was done in two thousand and four, and life is a little different today than it was in two thousand and four, including the fact that, one, we resolved the encouragement issue, and, two, the Air Force wants us to look at many more different, many different factors besides just land use. So, the Sustainability Plan covers seven different areas of concern or study for us to look at. That's everything from transportation, airspace, security, natural and cultural resources, economic and community development, and transportation. I always forget one, and it's usually transportation that I miss on. The process that we used, actually started several years ago with Houston County and Maconville County requesting that the Middle Georgia Regional Commission work with the Twenty-First Century Partnership and Robbins Air Force Base to have a sustainability, to work towards a sustainability plan. We were successful in receiving funding from the Department of Defense, and those funds were used to pay for the completion of the study with a consultant, Stan Tech. The Regional Commission was the project sponsor, so we contracted with Stan Tech to do the work. Thankfully, Stan Tech brought to the table their experience in doing sustainability plans for the two other ALCs in the United States, which was a great benefit to us in learning what other, if you want to call the other ALCs our competition, or if you want to call them our brothers and sisters, learning the issues that they have in comparison to ours. The resolution you have before you tonight, the plan is divided up so that there's a chapter on each of the seven topics, and then there's an implementation plan, because the most important piece of the planning process is moving towards implementation. So, there's a whole chapter on implementation that divides stuff by each individual jurisdiction. The resolution before you tonight is to seek your adoption of the Sustainability Plan and your continued commitment to be part of the implementation. As we move forward in implementation, different, the recommendations are grouped in different categories, and where we will really focus, some around communication, education, but also around studies. One of the high priority issues that was identified was looking to address housing and the housing challenges in Middle Georgia for the missing middle, and making sure that we have adequate housing, not just for women, but for the growth that we want to see in Middle Georgia. As we move forward, we'll establish the Implementation Committee, and if you approve the plan this evening, we would ask your continued participation. Your team was phenomenal throughout the eighteen-month process, in addition to the policy meetings that we had. We had technical working groups each, for each of the seven areas, they met multiple times, virtually, and in person, and your departments were heavily involved in the planning process, and we appreciate that contribution. And happy to answer any questions, Bob, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to add.
No, just from the partnership perspective, we appreciate the partnership we've had in the past on the joint land use study, and look forward to the continued participation going forward, so thank you.
Happy to answer any questions, Mike.
I'm looking forward to seeing that we can achieve the goals that we achieved last time.
Me, too.
I was so proud of everything you did on my last one, because it was clink of everything of all of this, this area.
Absolutely.
Citizens out here were a great part of this. Do you guys have any comments or thoughts on it? I know the team that were working with you didn't tell me how great everything was going, what a good job that, I tried to go to all the meetings, too.
Yes, sir.
I may not, may have gotten all of them, hope I did. Okay.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, as we talked about the partnership between the cities and the county, and the partnership with the folks at Robbins Air Force Base, really makes a difference in this region, because as in all the cities, many of our citizens work on the Air Force Base.
Absolutely.
So, it gives us an economic impact all over, and so, anything that we do together is gonna benefit all of us.
And Robbins Air Force Base was an active participant in the planning process, not just civil engineering, but all the different units that needed to be engaged on the various topics, whether it was airspace, security, or transportation, and they will remain engaged throughout the implementation, because there's some specific things that they need to be working towards in terms of additional study and cooperation between the local governments and the installation.
Thank you very much, Laurie, we appreciate what you guys do up there reading the resolutions.
Thank you.
Really good. I call for a question, all the papers say aye?
Well, I don't think we have a vote.
Mayor, I believe that we adopt this resolution as it is written, as it has been in our packets and was sent to us via email, I think we can forego reading the resolution this evening unless somebody desires to hear it.
Well, have a vote, should I have a second?
A second.
Motion, second. Okay, now, call, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for being here, nice to talk with you.
Absolutely.
Twenty-First Century Partnership does a wonderful job, I'll commend you to it, and ask you, continue to do it. Okay, that's the last thing on this here, so we're gonna go into the comments from council, we'll start with the city attorney, Becky Tides.
Who is not a council member, a staff member. I just have an announcement, we are gonna have to postpone our municipal court tomorrow. We had arraignment dockets at nine and two a.m. due to the availability of our judges, and that just came up this evening. So, all those cases are gonna be rescheduled for January the eleventh at nine and two, as stated on the citations, there will be notice on social media, posted on the court building, and that kind of thing, but wanted to say it since we're doing the Facebook live stream tonight, and maybe that'll push the information out a little bit more even tonight, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Post two, please.
Just wanted to thank everyone who came out to the Centerville Light of Christmas Parade this past weekend, it was very well attended, everyone that I saw had a great time. I feel like it's growing every year, normal, every year. It's hard to keep up with the amount of candy that we eat. See, because all the kids are out there, they're happy to do this, and it was a very, it was a very good time. And also, today is Rock Election Day, and we're still a little tired, and everybody who hasn't voted, please stand up there and be your seat, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Post two, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, it has been fun to sit on this end of the room tonight and be able to watch people go in and out and vote the whole time that we were sitting here in the meeting, and I feel that continues to go into that, we're a little grateful for that. I would just say to the Chairman, that what we were always told growing up is that when you're doing anything, you're leaving better than you found it, and you're not leaving, but it's certainly better than you found it, so we appreciate you, sir, thank you so much for your continued leadership, because you're not going anywhere, you're just changing statuses a little bit, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Post three.
So, I'd like to deal with that, I look forward to talking to you in the future. And again, thanks to all the department heads for all the work that you've done on all the events that we've had in the city, and the work that you've done with the Regional Commission on getting this Sustainability Plan together, and the work that you do every day. So, I just want you to know that we as a council really appreciate that, and we know that the citizens do also.
Thank you very much. Post four.
So, also, we'd like to thank the Middle Georgia Regional Commission and Twenty-First Century for coming out during the presentation. It's another example about how our city and the other cities in Houston County come together, work together to make this a better place to live and to state, so I'm certainly thanking for all the hard work that y'all do all the time. I'd also thank all the department heads as well for all the great work that they've been doing, especially with the parade, I think it turned out to be a great success. Everyone that I have spoken to have had nothing but great things to say about it, so, great job on everybody there, I know it was a lot of work. Chairman Stonaker, you know, when I first, when I first met you, it was when I just got elected into office, and you asked me to come to the commissioners' meeting to talk about my career, to talk about my Air Force career, and that was really quite, quite an impression, it made an impression on me, because even though, you know, even I'd been retired for a little bit from the Air Force, given that opportunity and the respect that the commissioners did, you know, with the copper cup, the picture, the pens, you know, all those things just sort of came together and really, you know, to see, and I know that you're involved in all kinds of activities with the base, supporting the base and all that, and so, I just wanted... And so I just wanted to tell you that I said that you made a serious impression on me. And I respect everything that you do. And so I know that you're not gonna be gone, you're gonna be around to to be the pillar we can call back on and say, hey Chairman, I got a question, right? So anyways, I just wanted to thank you, and you know, being a retired first sergeant, I have a coin I want to present to you before I leave tonight. Those you don't present, they're like covered, right, you don't really, just hand them out like candy. And it just, you know, just hoping that when you see that coin, that it reminds you of the people that you've crossed and the people you've been through your, in your career, and the respect that you've given them up there, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I got a call yesterday from the base out there, they invited me to have the Air Force environmental study for those new programs coming to the base. I think completely, they all passed. So that's a great thing. A lot of people don't quite understand what that means, but it's a big stepping stone when you get new programs on the base. I'm proud that they would announce that real quick. And again, you know, somewhat parade out there, that was a great parade. All the citizens were great, I talked to a lot of people out there. The honor guard, absolutely wonderful, having been there with us. You know, it just, it was something I'm proud of. This is the thirteenth year we've done, well, we missed one year then because of COVID. This was really the thirteenth year we've been involved. I've been there for thirteen years. It's a good thing to remember.
I have to give credit to Christmas idea initially.
It was.
And it was her brainchild, and it's just gotten better every year, but that's where the idea came from.
We used to have a thing where we went around with like a sleigh type thing, or back of truck, get toys out of there.
The department did.
Police department did that, yeah. And some of the others helped with it too, but this parade, that she put together the first time, the first time I ever saw it being put together, she did it all. I don't know how she did it, I appreciate it, but it gives me a memory back in my backboard. And Chairman, I don't want to say you've been my friend for all these years. I know I'm gonna miss you being up there, but I'm lucky to be sure of it, I know you gave me a phone number and I called you, and you answered me. So I like that. If I have a question or something, he finds the answer for me, I appreciate that. And he knows he can call me anytime, if he sees I'm doing something here that might be getting off slightly, call me, so. I appreciate the thoughts of that and what you do there. Appreciate your friendship so much. Really I do. Doing Sandy well. Okay, I don't have anything else, council's over, thank you very much.